Call to order the special meeting of the Beverly City Council Wednesday, September 30th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Ms. Kent, could you please read the roll?
Ames? Here. Feldman? Here. Flaherty?
Yeah.
Flower?
Here.
Brady's?
Here.
Hausman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Guanci.
I am here. Counselor Hausman, you do it so well. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Hausman. Is anybody else dying to get back live into City Hall? Ms. Kent, are we working on that?
It's not going to happen at City Hall anytime soon.
All right. Well, maybe, I think that our October meeting on Monday is scheduled for a Zoom meeting also, or Google Meet. Perhaps we could meet on the 19th. It's not a holiday. Could you look into setting that meeting up at the middle school?
Sure.
Because they're equipped, ready to go, correct?
Correct.
Awesome. Good stuff. All right. We have a very small agenda. We have some resolutions to take care of. We have three public speakers, and then we have a communication from Counselor Hausman, which is a late file, which I'll ask to accept in a little bit. I am going to take up resolutions first, and then we'll go to our three public speakers, and then we will go to Counselor Hausman. So I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file order number 194.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
Flower?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. And Ms. Ames, we do have the captions on. Thank you for reminding me about that. I'm never going to get used to this. Order 202, another police resolution. I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file on order number 202A. That's a revised police resolution and cover letter.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call, please.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. And I don't know how anybody caught me, but I didn't read the script. So let's go back to the script from remotely conducted city council meetings Wednesday, September 30th, 2020. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and hopefully livestreamed at some point by BevCam on both Channel 99 and BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor ordered suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation other than our three designated speakers. Please note that this meeting is being recorded live, recorded, and televised, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. You have the option to turn off your video if you are participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. We do not have to read Rule 22 this evening. Okay, back to our regular agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file on order number 194A.
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. And this order, I would like to address. Dear Honorable Counsel, what started out as a simple effort by myself and Counselor Flaherty to recognize the Beverly Police Department for their work throughout the current COVID-19 pandemic has taken a turn that I did not expect. Perhaps it was my original cover letter that was poorly worded, the specificity of the resolution, or the timing. Our intention was never to create a divide on the city council or in the community. That said, I'd like to thank everyone who reached out to me about the resolution, and appreciate those constituents who got to all of us by email that were respectful and had positive suggestions to put forth. I would also like to thank my colleagues on the council for their passion and commitment to everyone in our community, and the continued respect for the Beverly Police Department and other frontline workers. After reading through a number of emails today, I have asked Ward 1 Counselor Todd Rotundo to work with Ward 5 Counselor Kathleen Feldman on drafting a new resolution that recognizes all public safety personnel, frontline workers, and healthcare professionals for their efforts during this unprecedented time in our country's history. Counselor Flaherty and I request that you use some of the information in order number 194A in their final submission to the council. I would now like to read the resolution 194A, and then I'll ask for a motion to receive that and place it on file. Before I begin, I want to thank Captain, Chief John LaLasher, Captain Tim Hagerty, Captain Richie Russo, and Officer Steve Fiori for compiling some information that made it possible to put this together. Whereas, the Beverly Police Department's mission statement reads in part, "While maintaining respect for individual rights, human dignity, cultural diversity, and community values, we pledge to sustain a working partnership with our community to protect life and property to maintain a safe and peaceful environment for all." This core belief in partnerships forged with citizens in various community organizations has made Beverly one of the safest cities to live in in the Commonwealth. Whereas, the Beverly Police Department, the Beverly Police Department Community Advisory Committee, which includes citizen volunteers, offices of the public, a way to make suggestions on how to make Beverly a better, safer, and cleaner place to live. Projects worked on by the CAC include removing graffiti from our streets, downtown and neighborhoods, providing education to reduce drug abuse, and the implementation of a 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit to reduce the volume of speeding and dangerous drivers on our roads. Each year, the CAC also recognizes Beverly students who participate in their yearly art contest. Whereas, the Beverly Police Department's Community Impact Unit is making a difference in our city by responding to issues that have been raised by members of the community. This year, the department was awarded a $90,000 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health to hire a jail diversion worker, whose job will include helping those residents with mental health disorders, as well as assisting with overdose follow-up treatment. Whereas, the presence of the Beverly Police Department can be found at the forefront of making Beverly a Beverly, a better place for all Beverly's residents. Chief John LaLasher is an active member of the cities of Beverly's Human Rights Committee, and has said on more than one occasion, "We will not tolerate intolerance in Beverly." Officers from the Beverly Police Department have been present during several peaceful protests, and have maintained a professional demeanor by remaining neutral, thus ensuring that all citizens present remain safe and were able to execute their constitutional rights. Whereas, the Beverly Police Department is committed to keeping our schools a safe place for students to learn, grow, and thrive during this difficult time. The School Resource Officer Program is a collaborative effort by law enforcement officers, court personnel, educators, students, parents, and community to reduce crime while providing a safe and secure learning environment for everyone. The officer's duties include conducting school safety and prevention programs, and counseling students and their parents in some of the many complex issues they may be facing. The department's student resource officers also serve as ad hoc members of the YMCA's Beverly Youth Collaboration Board, and maintain a presence in the city's eight private schools. Whereas, the Beverly Police Department is committed to the rapid dissemination of public safety information to the citizens of Beverly. The department has enhanced its communication technology and social media applications. The city's swift-reach phone system, Beverly Police Department Facebook, Twitter, My Police Department smartphone application, and the Beverly Police website, beverlypd.org, have made it easier and more effective to provide timely and concise community safety information to the public. Whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, members of the police department have been ready to answer the call for something as simple as helping an elderly person cross the street to saving somebody's life by administering a dose of Narcan. The men and women of the department take pride in every task and responsibility. Lifesaving medical aid, suicide prevention, keeping businesses safe and secure, eliminating drugs from our street, investigating any number of crimes are all in a day's work. The members of the Beverly Police Department come to the aid of all citizens, regardless of their color, race, gender, political views, health, or economic status. Whereas, for over two decades, the men and women of the Beverly Police Department have been working in substandard and crowded facilities. While the City of Beverly took care of other building needs, six elementary schools, a high school, and a middle school, the force has waited patiently and professionally to have this base needs net. The City of Beverly, as well as the department, is looking forward to the completion of Beverly's new police station in the summer of 2021. And I won't read the last part, but I will ask for a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo, briefly, or Counselor Feldman, just give us an idea of what you're working on.
I'm happy to go, if you want to.
Go ahead, Counselor Feldman.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. So Counselor Rotundo and I have talked this week, and I really appreciate him bringing up the idea of, you know, we both agree that although we agree with every single piece of writing in the resolution as it is, we really want to support the police department by not creating divides. I'm from a law enforcement family. I spoke with my cousin at length about this, who is an officer in Buffalo, and he said that the worst thing that can happen as police officers for him right now is them to be seen as us versus them. And my concern was, in wanting to support the police department in the right way, something that focused on only the police department at this time was not going to have the support and effect that we want, and it wasn't going to protect the kind of community bridges that we're trying to build here. So I'm really happy to be working with Counselor Rotundo and recognizing the, especially, you know, the Board of Health, and the school nurses, and the fire department. And we really wanted to make sure that everyone that stepped up in this challenging time was appreciated and represented in this. And like I said, it wasn't because we don't agree with all of the words on the piece of paper in the resolution itself, because we absolutely both support the police. So we're hoping that this can be a little bit more of an inclusive bridge-building resolution. And I think, I think I've summed it up, but if Counselor Rotundo has anything to add, I'd be happy to hear it.
Counselor Rotundo.
I, basically, she summed it up fairly well. We're not going to work on it in the next couple of weeks. We're going to reach out to the different parts of the city. We're well aware of the resolution with the department personally. I've had a lot of interactions with the police department during the pandemic especially. But there are many other parts of the city that we want to recognize that hopefully we'll have a great resolution that we all can stand behind and push forward with you guys. So bear with us, because we are going to work on this in the next week or two, and hopefully we'll have something to you within the next meeting or so. But thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Any other questions or comments before we move on to our public speakers?
Mr. Guanci, I'd like to say something.
Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you.
Use the chat.
What I'd like to just kind of briefly summarize of why my intentions were to do this resolution. It was to bridge gaps. It was to do it in a positive way, to build community, so everybody in the community, people of color, everybody in the community could feel safe, that they know that the police department is behind them and is doing a good job. So people felt comfortable. We are the leaders of the community, and we need to say we stand behind our police department. The same way, I would do the same thing if we didn't feel our police department was up to par, and we would do a vote of no confidence. I believe that they have done a great job, and I think it was important for me, why I wanted to do this, to show the community that we have a good police department, and it's safe to do, by working together, not by being divisive, not by doing all the things that, and again, I got a lot of good emails. I also got some emails that were kind of concerning a little bit, the negativity that we're talking about, trying to get away from. And that's a little concerning for me, but I'm hoping that we can put some of this resolution put forth by Ms. Feldman, that we can go ahead and, Mr. Rotundo, that we can kind of go forward and honor the resolution that we talked about, and honor some other ones, but also understanding that, trying to bring the community together, and that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Rand, please.
Thank you, President Guanci. I just, I guess I just have a couple brief things to share. And one, thank you to Counselor Feldman and Counselor Rotundo for taking up the work of a different and new resolution. Counselor Feldman, I really appreciated your words in saying that you, you're coming to this, thinking about how the resolution that was before us would have created an us-against-them feeling, and that would not benefit police or the community. So I think that, thank you for saying that. And thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for sharing with us your thoughts on why you put the resolution forward. And President Guanci, I wanted to thank you for allowing me to first try to amend the, not amend, but add to your original resolution. I think you have always given me the space that I need to lead, and at this, in this, this situation. It wasn't me that actually needed to lead this moment, and so I wanted to thank you, President Guanci, for taking leadership in this moment, and realizing that anything that has this much tension and challenge behind it is probably not the best step forward. I think that's a hard thing to do as a leader, and I really commend you for taking that step.
Well, thank you for your kind words, Counselor Rand. What really helped me a lot today, I know I had a long conversation with Leah Jones, who was Chair of the Human Rights Committee, and she, I mean, she's a wonderful asset to the city, and she is definitely a bridge builder, and really helped me, helped me along today to understand why we needed to put a stop on this. This is just the start, and I think that in the end, we'll have a far better product once everybody is recognized. Does anybody have anything else? Somebody's knocking at my door. Oh, it's just Noah. Noah, go away. All right. So let's move on to, before our public speakers, we have one more thing to take care of.
Oh, President Guanci.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there, Counselor Flowers.
Oh, it's just something really brief, but I just, you mentioned Leah Jones, and then I realized that, well, it is, but thank you. Kajah Johnson is our new Human Rights Committee Chair, and I didn't know if folks realized that she was new in that, new to that role. She's not new to us or the city, and I know Kajah's on the meeting, so when you mentioned Leah, it just made me realize that with Kajah here, I want to say welcome into that role of Chair of the Human Rights Committee to her. So thank you.
Thank you for reminding me that, because I knew that, I said Leah was the former chair, and you let me know that Kajah was in charge now.
You said it absolutely correctly. Thank you.
I'm still not used to, I need to see my friends live and in person. Okay, let's go to communications from other city offices and boards. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from Counselor Hausman.
So moved.
Second. And a roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames? Yes. Feldman?
Yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That other job always gets in the way. Counselor Hausman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to read my statement, my open letter to the council, before we take public comment, if you would so allow. Do we need a motion to that effect, or simply your ruling?
No. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you.
I want you to read your letter, please.
Okay, thank you. It's a little lengthy. Dear colleagues, this is an open letter to you, my fellow elected city councilors. This body has an exemplary tradition of collegiality that has distinguished our meetings from other local public bodies. I am committed to keeping our collegiality alive and well, not for its own sake alone, although disagreeing without being disagreeable is fundamental to constructive deliberation. But more than that, in this particularly divisive moment in our shared national history, as community leaders, we will set the tone of how this city conducts its community affairs. Disagreement is a natural and constructive friction to both deliberation and making progress. Accepting that there will be uncomfortable moments is part of being an elected official. It goes with the territory. But Beverly is a special community. It is generous and welcoming, with a large community spirit of togetherness. So as we proceed, I hope that all of us will be committed to create collegiality as well as constructive friction. This means being kind to each other, and particularly being committed to listening to each other as we work through the challenges our city faces. That can mean second chances, giving the benefit of the doubt to intentions behind statements made on a sensitive and unfamiliar subject. Our community is listening to us. Let us set an example of how to talk and listen to each other. By doing so, we can ask our citizens to follow our example and let the better angels of our nature prevail. Tonight, we will have a forever conversation, a conversation about race in America. I long resisted the idea that national issues belong in city council conversations. I wanted the council to stick to arguably objective measurement, objective measurements like budgets, city management, and city planning issues. That is, to avoid social issues. But I have learned that some large social issues are local issues as well, and they must be addressed at the local level. Talking about race in Beverly is not a one-and-done conversation, a resolution to pass, a task force report to report on, so that we can move on. Tonight, we will, we are, talking about police and the people of color in Beverly. But as long as we are imperfect, and we will always be imperfect, we must be willing to continue having conversations about what is not right, about what can and should be better. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to walk across a bridge of turbulent waters with our constituents to reach a city of mutual understanding. Walking across that bridge will require a willingness to walk with the weight of uncertainty and uncomfortableness people of color face on a daily basis. That weight can be difficult to pick up, because for white people, the source of that weight is largely invisible. This council has and does support the important work and service of our police department to the residents of Beverly. This council approved an increase in this year's police department budget, and voted to spend tens of thousands of dollars to build a long overdue new police station for our department. That we support our police department is clear and a matter of record. At the same time, it is possible and necessary to say unequivocally that Black Lives Matter. These two statements of support do not have to be, and should not have to be, contradictory. I support both statements. But recent events have opened my eyes to what was previously invisible to me as a white person. My support for our police department does not remove from me an understanding of why black people find it hard to trust police officers generally. An absence of police brutality in Beverly does not change what black people see happening in other places in our country. I am hearing from black people in Beverly that they do not always feel safe in Beverly. They say this, although I, a white man, am unaware of any overt instances that would cause them to feel that way. But as an elected official, it is my opinion that I have an obligation to engage in conversations to understand why they feel that way. For me, I do not think this is something that should be delegated to others. I think this is an obligation of all our elected officials. I have heard from some police officers that they feel under siege, uncomfortable how national events may be affecting local perceptions and opinions of them. It sounds to me like morale may be low. At the same time, I have come to understand that feeling uncomfortable is an involuntary, daily experience for many black people in Beverly when they wake up every morning, not because they have made a personal choice of community service, as our police officers have, but because the color of their skin in a white world brings experiences of prejudice, preconceived ideas, and ignorance. For them, saying Black Lives Matter is a way of saying they feel under siege, and an affirmative way of saying change is needed. I hear that good constructive conversations on race are happening in our city. They include people of color, members of the Human Rights Committee, and the police. But there remains a lack of information and clarity about when, where, and what is the goal of those conversations. Absent, for me, is a well-stated commitment and articulated city policy around addressing relations between the police department and black people in Beverly, people who are our friends, neighbors, and constituents. These conversations are building bridges to better understanding between police and the community. But we are falling short in the eyes of the community. We need a better, more formal, broadly seen affirmation of anti-racist policy by our police department. At this moment in our country, asking for such a policy should not be taken as an insult, and such policy should not be and such policy should not be obviously implied by the police department's mission statement. On August 25th, the mayor declared racism to be a public health emergency in Beverly and committed to, quote, "review policies and implement changes to dismantle systematic racism in our community," close quote, "and to make available specific race and ethnic data to document the health inequities that exist in Beverly," close quote. And on June 6th, the mayor pledged he would report to the city the results of his review of the police department's use of force policy by September 6th or earlier. In his June statement, the mayor made a personal pledge to, quote, "seek a meaningful and transformational community dialogue on race and racism, equity and opportunity, a dialogue that is well overdue in every city and town in America. I'm determined to listen, to learn, and to make the changes that are needed to ensure that everyone in the city will feel safe in their daily lives." I ask tonight that the entire city council take this pledge. It is a good and appropriate one. And I call on the mayor to deliver his report, now well overdue, and make it available in a way that is broadly accessible. And I encourage the council to learn how we can work together as a body with the mayor and the police department to support implementation of that pledge. The format of city council meetings is not well structured for sensitive personal exchanges among councilors. Virtual meetings and the open meeting law create their own challenges for such exchanges. But we can, as a public, as a body, pledge to work on being more aware about how we view this city as a home for all of our residents. I conclude with this. As a city council, we can help ourselves and all the citizens of Beverly by working together to create opportunities for conversations, to actively engage in learning about how others experience racism, and to create bridges of understanding within our community. If we make a pledge to do this work, we can walk a path away from divisive rhetoric and join in leadership to create positive changes for Beverly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Great work. I know that you worked on it that afternoon to get this into the, to tonight's meeting and I appreciate your effort. Do any other members of the council like to comment on Councilor Hausman's letter? So what I'm going to do is rather, oh, Council Flowers, you're always slow on the draw.
I feel like with the chat today, I am slow on the draw. I'm sorry. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. I just wanted to echo your thanks to Councilor Hausman. I know we got this as a late file and I had a chance to read it this afternoon and I just, I found it a really powerful and helpful piece in terms of thinking about some of the conversation and the topics that I think our council, this entire council, has been striving to undertake and to talk about. You know, I think back, we really began this summer when we had the conversation where Council Rand invited us all to share something that we try to do to make, make people in Beverly who don't look like us or share our same experience feel welcome. And that was such a starting, that was like putting our foot inside the door. And I think back to that same meeting where Kajah spoke to us and shared her experience of what it is to live here in Beverly and how it feels for her to live here and have her children here. And I remember, Kajah, you asked us to please do something but don't do nothing. And, you know, I feel like it's a path that we need to continue to walk as a community, as a city, as a council. But I found Councilor Hausman's words a helpful reflection of where we need to continue to go, to strive. I particularly just wanted to say that I appreciated in Councilor Hausman's words his acknowledgement that if this, if this work and the work of anti-racism and justice work feels uncomfortable or weighty for white people in our community, and I include, you know, I include myself in that. I think it's always important that, you know, to recognize that we're all works in progress together and we're striving to unlearn a lot of what we've learned for years and years and to do better. And so I appreciated, Councilor Hausman, your assessment that for our neighbors and friends of color, that discomfort, that weight, that heaviness, that's been their lived experience for years. And so if we're beginning to get a little uncomfortable, it's incumbent on us to push through, to not let our discomfort turn away from this important, turn us away from this important work. So I just wanted to thank you for your work and to thank Kajah for that original call to us and just say that I'm committed to continuing on the journey together on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Flowers, and really thank you for that comment about that we're all works in progress, that's for sure. Councilor Ames, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate everyone's heartfelt effort here. Councilor Hausman, your letter is brilliant. I had prepared a statement for tonight. Much of it touched on what Councilor Flowers was talking about, how we are. We, as white people, look at a community and we look at the breaks in it and the fissures and that sometimes it's hard to stand up and to keep moving through and that it is so important for all of us to keep doing this work. And I'm so heartened as somebody who believes in the CAC, the Police CAC, and believes, you know, and was on the Human Rights Committee last week, that I think that together we are so much stronger. And I'm just thrilled to see this development and I'm looking forward to really digging in, to working on these issues. So thank you, Mr. President, and Councilor Feldman, Rotundo, this is Councilor Rand, this is Councilor Flaherty. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Councilor Ames. I lost my train of thought. What I would like to do, rather than receive and place on file Councilor Hausman's letter, I would entertain a motion to reaffirm council's letter from all of us.
So moved.
Second.
You're a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Aye.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, and Councilor Hausman, thanks again. I know sometimes I give you a little hard time with what's going on, but that, that letter was worth every word tonight. Thank you so much. Kind of brought everything all together. If, if nobody has anything else to add, let's go to our public speakers, if you're still here, I hope. The new Chair of the Beverly Human Rights Committee, Kajah Johnson, is here.
Thank you, Council Guanci. I just want to say thank you so much to each and every one of you. You all work hard and your hard work does not go unnoticed. I wanted to also introduce myself, thank you, Councilor Flowers, as the new Human Rights Committee Chair. I remember back in June, when I first spoke at a council meeting, I was in a complete different place than, than where I am today. And I say that to say that the growth is never-ending and I learn, I know, every day something new and different positions, different views. And I truly believe that, like Council Hausman said, it takes to listen and to learn to really achieve what we want to achieve, which is unity in the city of Beverly, Massachusetts. And, you know, I, I've talked to a lot of the city councilors about leadership and what that means to me and what direction Beverly is going in and what is our vision and, you know, what is the mindset that we have and as leaders to be leading with love and unity and to really take the time out to reflect and do a lot of understanding, self-reflecting, but also to open our minds up to things that are not so comfortable and things that we're not used to and may not understand, and myself included. You know, I, I believe that tonight, this is the hard work, you know, and I think that each and every person here tonight is here for the same reason. You know, we want to see Beverly, Massachusetts in a place of success and peace and welcoming everyone. We want everyone to be seen, everyone to be heard, and for everyone to be supported. And I, I can't, I can't express how proud I am. You know, I was prepared to say a lot of things that were already said and that makes me, that makes, that gives me a sense of relief and it also just reassures me that Beverly is headed in the direction that we had all agreed that we were headed to begin with. And I wanted to thank you all again for listening and learning and being here with me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kajah, and thank you for coming in on video so we got to see you tonight, not just hear you. Much appreciated. Our second speaker is Alyssa Raymond Reed. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can see you too.
Great. I haven't used this platform as much as Zoom, so I've been trying to figure out how to align all the Brady Bunch boxes on my screen so I can see everybody. I appreciate being given the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I recognize this is a challenging moment and a challenging set of issues for this council to grapple with. I want to really honor and appreciate, I'm going to use the word civility, knowing how loaded it is right now, but I really appreciate the way that everyone talks to each other, the way that everyone listens. I don't come to council meetings often as a resident of Beverly, but the last time that I went to a council meeting was live, when we were all able to be unmasked together, when the council passed a deeply meaningful resolution for my family supporting safety and inclusion for transgender people. And my child, who's nine years old, is non-binary trans. It was a moment that was incredibly powerful as a mom who is navigating what that means for my family and how to navigate a path that's not something I predicted as, you know, I didn't get a script for that in the parenting handbook that we all get. And the city council did a really magnificent job listening to each other and not being sure where to go next. I think that this is another moment like that. So I want to just reckon, sort of hearken back to that moment and urge you again to sort of surface that excellent listening power and commitment to our city, commitment to the residents of the city that you may need to still get to know as we navigate these uncharted paths that we have because of the moment in history that we're facing. I'm also Jewish and there's never been a moment that I've been more scared as a Jew. I think that if anyone, you know, growing up, I'm 43, I just had my birthday on Yom Kippur, which was Monday. This is a very meaningful time as a Jew. Kind of unusual to have a birthday on a Jewish holiday like Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement. But at the time where we reckon with our history, we reckon with our personal history as a human and we reckon with our collective history. And I'm really, really aware that we are facing some challenges as civic communities and how we're going to confront extreme polarization, extreme division, extreme vulnerability and anxiety, public health anxiety, political anxiety, civic violence, you know, you name it, it's on our plate right now. So I know that this resolution has surfaced some of these things. I sent out a email, a letter, to my counselor, City Counselor Scott Hausman. I copied some of you and I apologize, I didn't copy all of you. I didn't know who I was supposed to include. But I sent out a lengthy letter addressing what I was worried about, about President Guanci's resolution, proposed resolution. I really appreciate the thought that's already been put into amending that. And then my counselor's letter, or I'm not sure what to call it, Scott, that you just read. So I already am really moved by the thought and the collective engagement in trying to understand what this is going to, how this would impact our, our community and how it would impact residents. That being said, I want to, I don't want to read my letter, even though, you know, I know that some of you didn't maybe get it. I hope that all of you will take the time to read it because I think that what I raised is something that is not just my concerns, but concerns that I've heard over many months in the wake of the George Floyd murder and the protest movements that have come up in the wake of that, the calls for police reform, the calls for defunding the police, and some of the polarizing rhetoric we've heard in local and national debates. So I want everyone to read it, if you haven't, and I'm happy to forward it. I want to summarize a few things because I think it's still relevant to what you're considering now. And I also want to make a few additional points to, in addition to what I put into my original letter. So by way of introduction, since I didn't introduce myself, my name is Alyssa. I use super pronouns. I've lived in Beverly for over 10 years with my husband and two children. My older child is transgender, my younger child is a cisgender boy. They're six and nine. This is our first home. I grew up in Massachusetts and I am deeply committed to Massachusetts. I work as the Massachusetts Director of a nonprofit, doing environmental law and advocacy, and I'm really committed to civil rights and to social justice. And I think Beverly is a place that's been a home for our family because of the progressive momentum we have felt here since we have been here. I really feel connected to a lot of our neighbors and a lot of local institutions and businesses and I'm committed to helping Beverly be a place, you know, a home of choice, a business of choice, a place to live and grow. I think Beverly, this kind of a resolution that calls out police and frankly, even the amended version, is dangerous to the progression that Beverly's been making over a number of years that I've seen and witnessed personally. And in particular, I think that the work of our police chief on the Human Rights Committee to engage and to open up conversations and to, and to start magnifying issues of controversy and embracing conflict and figuring out how to move forward in conflict is really inspiring. And having, in this particular moment, calling out police, calling out even first responders is a dog whistle. And for those of you who heard our debates last night, I do think that there is a lot of meaning, cannot divorce what we are saying right now from the context in which we are saying it. Beverly has an opportunity and I feel an obligation to be innovative and to be putting our police in the position that they deserve to be community leaders and to be on the forefront of community engagement work. We can be the best. We can be a place, a destination where people come that is in between the north of us, that is almost entirely white and affluent, and to the south of us, that is immigrant, mixed, diverse, not affluent. And we can be a place that invites artists, queer people, people of color. But we can only do that if we have the support, the training, the engagement, and the funding of our law enforcement and our other elected officials. So I think that calling out those elected officials, those law enforcement members, first responders right now, is understood to be a response to the Black Lives Matter, anti-racism, police reform movement. And even if those things are valuable, the way to do that is not to pass a resolution that acts as a lightning rod that will polarize us, but to think of ways that we can create safety nets, that we can proclaim really loudly, this is a community that, that is inclusive and safe for all people. Those are the statements that we need to be making now because people are scared. I am personally scared as a Jewish woman of a trans child. And my child said to me this morning after hearing some of the news coming out on our radio, Mom, we already have two strikes against us. We're Jewish. radio, "Mom, we already have two strikes against us, we're Jewish and we're trans. If we were people of color, we'd be really, really scared right now." I'm not a person of color, I have a lot of privilege as a white woman, but I do believe a nine-year-old child saying that to me is something that we all need to reflect on and understand, what is it that we are communicating about this city? So, I do think that there's no reason to pass a resolution now, right now before an election, right now after a debate in which the President of the United States would not condemn white supremacy. We can't afford to make a proclamation that would operate to and would signal exactly the opposite of what I believe the city council and the city wants to be at this time. I think we should be at the cutting edge of what's possible, and that means making proclamations that honor our law enforcement officials but do not in any way allow for what happened, what we've seen happen in other cities and towns. Blue Lives Matter is being used, it is being used and weaponized as a tool to divide people. There is absolutely no need to do that. So I would urge at this time to just not pass either of these resolutions and to think of ways to create systemic change or to make broad, if we're going to make any broad proclamations, to make broad proclamations that we are with the most vulnerable people now in this time. I really appreciate being given the space to speak tonight and I'm happy to follow up in any ways that are useful to the city council. Thank you.
Alyssa, thank you so much. And if you could send your email and your letter to the city clerk, Ms. Kent, she'll get it to everybody that didn't get it already. Good stuff, appreciate you pouring your hodo. Much appreciated. And the Brady Bunch reference was dynamite, but for the rest of that, I'm going to think of Estelle Rand as Ann B. Davis, because she's right in the middle of my screen as Alice. Thank you. One more speaker, it's our friend, Mr. Andrew DeFranza. Mr. DeFranza, are you still with us?
I am, I hung in there.
All right, thank you. Come on, it's early.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to echo a lot of the facts and pile on in that direction and applaud you all and thank you for doing the hard work, figuring out how we can move forward together in some, in some better way, honoring all our public servants and also really advancing with vigor these questions of racial equity. I am concerned about the compliment to Counselor Hausman about the brevity of his speech, Mr. President, because it feels like that could lead to terrible things in the future. So, that, you know, we'll have to live with that part of this, but it was a great letter and I'm just proud to be here and applaud you all and thank you for doing good, hard work in a really difficult time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranza. And good luck with all the good projects that you're working on with HCP.
Thank you, sir.
That's all we have on our agenda tonight. Does anybody have anything else to add before I ask for motion to adjourn? Look, we let Scott talk all that one time, so he didn't have anything else at the end. You're the best, Counsel. Counselor Feldman, please.
I just want to thank all my fellow councilors and everyone that did write to us. I know that I was not alone this week, the people on the screen having some really difficult conversations and when we speak to that, being uncomfortable, it made me, it made me think even more deeply about what leadership is and what being an ally is and that, living in that uncomfortability. I know that we've talked about this, but I'm just so appreciative to work with all of you and my colleagues, because this was a really rough couple of weeks in coming to this and I just am so happy that we can come together civilly and work together on something that we can hopefully all be proud of and stand behind and represent all the people of Beverly. So, thank you to my fellow councilors.
Counsel Flowers?
Thank you, President Guanci. I think Counselor Rand might have beat me out by one on the chat.
Oh, she did, I'm sorry. You are in the Ann B. Davis spot. Do you want to go to Counselor Rand and she'll go back to where she was?
I'll let Counselor Rand go ahead of me so she can go back to being Alice, yes.
All right, Counselor Rand.
I don't know how I feel about that.
No, you can't, you're not ready now.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, give two thank yous. One, thank you to Chief LaLasher for taking the time to speak with me, basically whenever I have a question. And I am really looking forward to continuing working with you and your whole department and supporting you in whatever way I can as a city councillor. And then I also wanted to thank Kasia Johnson for being here with us today. I think, you know, I feel honored, even as the Chair of the Human Rights Committee, who is somewhat obligated to be here, but overall, I feel honored that Kasia was willing to give us her time again and to see us through something that is probably challenging for her in a way that we don't have to experience. So I just wanted to thank Kasia for her grace and for her time, and I'm looking forward to working with you through the Human Rights Committee as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rand. Counsel Flowers?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, Counselor Feldman sort of alluded to this, but I did want to mention that I, as I'm sure all of us, did hear from many members of our community and I just wanted to thank everyone who took the time to write or email or call. And I know sometimes maybe people may feel, may wonder if it has an impact, you know, or if your elected officials hear you when you reach out to us. And I want to say thank you, because hearing from members of our community, having the conversations, talking together is really valuable to me and I feel confident that it's not an overreach for me to say that it is to my colleagues as well, but I just wanted to thank everyone who took the time. I know people are, have a lot going on in their lives and reaching out and letting me know your questions, your thoughts, your feelings, it was really helpful to me. I also just wanted to echo President Guanci, your thanks for our speakers. I really appreciated all of their words tonight and I appreciate also that Chief LaLasher took time out of the schedule this week to speak with me and I just wanted to thank him for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers, and it was really great that everybody reached out today via email to most, if not all of us. Okay, here's what's next on the agenda. We're going to hear from Counselor Hausman and then, I think most fittingly, the person who's going to have the last word tonight is our police chief, John LaLasher. Counselor Hausman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to echo what's just been said by the previous three councilors. Chief LaLasher has always been incredibly responsive, always available, and I deeply appreciate, you know, the working relationship we have. And I also want to thank, again, you know, all the people, all my constituents, both in Ward 4 and across the city, who reached out to me with really thoughtful and deeply felt letters. I echo what Counsel Flowers said, it really does make a difference when we hear from you and I just want to thank them for that. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Hausman. Chief LaLasher?
Thank you, and I'll be very brief, and I want to thank all the councilors. As always, I enjoy talking to you and in the last couple of weeks, we had some very good conversations, as well as I have with a lot of citizens in the city. Had a very long conversation today with Reverend Andre and John Amrall about, you know, helping us to move forward. But, you know, one of the things that's brought out, and we always support our team, you know, the men and women of the police department are doing an incredible job in so many different areas, in so many different ways, and our partners in the fire department, the health department, Beverly Hospital, EMS service for the city, Northeast Androids, we work together collaboratively all the time. When COVID hit, we immediately hit a homicide investigation, which the offices and detectives worked through. One of the witnesses in that case came back positive for COVID, so the office immediately was separated from their families and had to take tests for COVID. Thank God, none of them tested positive. And we did start going through that, and unfortunately, right now, the United States, I think we're up to about, I think the final number, or I shouldn't say the final number, because it's continuing, but there's about 500 police officers, law enforcement officers, corrections officers in the United States that have died from COVID since March. And it's something we continue to worry about. And as President Guanci said, we're still responding to medicals and heart attacks and car accidents, we don't know who we're coming with, and that's all of our partners. So we certainly appreciate the sentiment. On the other note, Kasia and I have had a lot of conversations, Lee and I have had a lot of conversations in many, and many of them on the call, that these are, a lot of these things we've been doing for years, and it's obviously been brought up because of what's going on nationally. You know, I came up with the statement, or the catchphrase is "No tolerance in tolerance in Beverly" several years ago. The first time I said it was at an out meeting at North Shore Music Theater, in the after-party. And Karen gave me the opportunity to speak and so, we've been doing these things for years and we're going to continue to do these things and get better. We definitely denounce, you know, white supremacy, racism in any manner or form. We certainly, and I think all those in the call know, we've worked with our Jewish community in definitely protecting their rights and their honor, honor their right to worship, and we'll continue to do that. But also, you know, we denounce anyone who discriminates, any marginalized members of our community in the city. We're going to treat everybody equally and fairly, do whatever we can to build better relationship with our citizens of color and make them feel safe. And that's been driven home, not only tonight, but in several phone calls I've had with community members, and the mayor and I and a lot of community members have had numerous phone calls, equity calls, and we're going to continue to work through those things. We're committed, the police department's committed, I know the city councilors, and we're just glad to see and hopefully look forward to seeing what comes up with the resolutions from the joint council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks to everybody who was here tonight, either listening in or speaking. And once again, it's a pleasure to work with all of my colleagues. I appreciate your input and it's nice that we all respect each other, listen to each other and work things through. So we are, we'll be in recess until Monday, October 5th, that is our next meeting. That said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
That's the only one everybody's quick on, on the second. How about a roll call vote, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yep.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.